I'm calling the in order. Sandy, we call the roll please. Lynchway?
Eric.
Cather?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Jacobson? Turgens?
Here.
Roberts? Eric? Swornson?
Here.
Russell's?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So.
Second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion carries. Number four, please.
Motion to wait the reading of the minutes for July 10th, 2007 regular meeting and July 24th, 2007 special meeting and approve them as printed.
Second? The motion is to waive the reading of the minutes of July 10th, 2007 regular meeting and July 24th, 2007 special meeting and approve them as printed. Is there a discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion carries. We move on to number five, citizen appearances. There are no public hearings tonight, so this is the time on the agenda for the public to make comment. What I would ask first of all, if there are any persons here that wish to comment other than from the Soul Committee, ECP, or the West Side Stormwater Problems. Are there any other issues that a citizen would like to comment about tonight? Okay, then we will move first of all to the Soul Committee.
Well, we'll get right on to the Soul Committee. First, I want to recognize there is a lot of Soul people, people from the city here tonight to back the case for moving those funds through Lake, the Finance Board, and the Park Board, and the Public Works have already done. Second, we passed out a letter for Soul, requesting a grant and a public board and that's our official answer at this point. Third, we have 476 people that signed up, basically saying we'd like to see the tax people, tax companies go for fixing the lake. There are still several sheets out circulating, and we aren't done yet. We're going on this for a while, but I just thought I'd like to let you know that statistically, all of us had less than 30 people who said, no, they didn't want to sign, or they were afraid there was going to be a tax problem. Some of those people just didn't understand what was happening. Some of them felt that the lake should be returned to normal. About 476, I think 30 is a pretty small percentage. Any questions?
Questions for you all?
Keep up the work.
Okay, thank you. ECP?
Well, I'm here to celebrate. We're thanking the city for a successful Fourth of July, and we thank you for all that you've helped in that. The Park Committee, Ray Anderson and his staff had it looking great, as all you people that must have been there were celebrating. John Rasmussen came up on an emergency situation when it was after hours, and he helped us with the electricity problem. And the police also helping with all the activities during the day and at night. Do you have enough down here, Tony?
Yep.
To pass up? If anybody wants some more, I've got extra copies. As you can read, there were over 100 volunteers throughout the six days that we have this Fourth of July celebration, representing 150 organizations and businesses from the Evansville area. And we really, really appreciated all the ones that were sponsors and volunteers at the same time. Our ECP did the music part of the town, the big tents and things. But it's also another fund is the Fourth of July Committee. And that Fourth of July Committee involves lots and lots of community people. And so, we thank them because they each have their own interests in the Fourth of July celebration. So there's really two different accounts. What was on the Fourth of July afternoon, it was late, and Brad came down into the area where I happened to be, and he said, "What a fantastic day we have been." And he said, "I think what's the nicest part of it, about this community, there's nice people here all day." And on Sunday, when it was so beastly hot and the car show was there, I was sitting with two men from Stoughton, and they both said, "Wow, this is a great community festival. Next year, we're going to bring our wives." And so, thank you. Thank you all for coming. And if you haven't tried the Lumper Lab, we definitely encourage you all to participate in that next year. And if you don't know what it is, that's why you need to come and see it. Okay, also, on this agenda, you see that John Decker, with the sponsorship of U B and T, have acquired the Foundation Directory of Wisconsin. So if there's any groups looking for grants of any needs or activities that they're working towards within the city, please stop at the ECP office to look at that book or contact John Decker. We have two new board members, Kathy from the library, Kathy Kemp, and Rich Nerdoff, Nerdoff, from the community, and they've added a lot to our board already. You also notice that it's Imagine Us, creating our community's future. And this is a group of citizens, organizations, and interested people in creating a strategic planning committee that is going to look at where we've been and where we want to go. And it is open to everyone, and they're inviting them into the surrounding townships and communities to work together also. And they are planning to have a meeting or a gathering for the strategic planning next spring 2008. So please, any of you that are interested, you are welcome to come to the library. Their next meeting is at 11:30 on August 21st. And then, Just Desserts. Just Desserts. This is a biannual situation. You can just pay off these. You must be using them up. Just Desserts is appropriately being held on September 11th in recognition of volunteers. And it's going to be at the J.C. McKenna Middle School this year. Anyway, it is a time to recognize people that have volunteered above and beyond, and it's their time to get their Just Desserts. And so, on the back of this report, you see there is a blank sheet of paper that needs to be filled in with your recommendation of a volunteer that you wish to have recognized on September 11th. So we encourage, even though you're not going to be recognized, maybe come and support those people that are on September 11th. Thank you, Alia.
Water problems. And what I would like is for citizens to give your name and your address. We want to hear your concerns. We'd like you to keep them brief. We normally say three minutes. We'll grant you a little latitude, but don't keep us an hour because your neighbors want to speak. We'd like to know the details of your particular house. We are interested in working with the citizens, but we do need to know exactly what occurred on your properties. So if you would like to start out, someone?
I'll go.
Okay.
Steve Ouch, we live on South Sixth Street, 571. You were there Sunday. You were there Sunday with the eggs. 2004, it rained for three days. We had a problem, and people here said the problem with the flooding was because somebody's fence wasn't aligned. Well, I wasn't here in April this year, but somebody filmed it. We're big time now because it was on YouTube, and people can't believe, when you show people those pictures, they can't believe that's supposed to be dry ground. We made the newspapers in Janesville, front page last week, second page today, and I guess the wrong part is Reedsburg. Is that the way we want to treat our citizens here? Because what's happening is, you said that you fixed the problem, it's not. The three-day rain we had in 2004, it was up to the tree line. The rain, first rain we had two weeks ago on a Saturday, that was one night, and it was four feet higher than it was 2004. So whatever the problem that they said they fixed, it's not fixed. Like I said, Mayor, you were there. You can't tell me that's not a problem, and you came after it went down the sun. We got six feet of water right there right now. If we get a rain like we did last night, which last night's rain was only like three hours. You get two, three As, one neighbor, I don't know their name, but when I left to work on that Tuesday morning, the water was six inches under the basin window. That rain was 10 feet from my place. So if we get a three-day rain, they're going to be in my basement windows. So that's why I got.
Thank you. Yes?
Stephanie Bifford, that's 579 South Sixth Street. First, I just want to say Soul Committee can purchase our lakefront property at 579 South Sixth Street. I have had a priority for it. Anyways, I guess my concern was actually today. I went over there, and it was worse than it was when you guys were there, way worse. In fact, the drainage pond next to the brown house that sits right there has actually met with the other pond and now they form one big lake. So if you were over there this morning, you'd see the lake that actually covers the whole south part of that neighborhood. You were out there this morning, it was the worst I've ever seen. And that was just from one lake. Both of those ponds had actually backed into one another, and it formed about, I'd say 20 to 30-foot wide river that you can whitewater raft down in our backyard. And that is my concern, is a child around naming that. There are kids that play in that pond all the time, they shouldn't be, but when it's in their backyard and they want to go outside and play, and I just don't want to see a fatality is what causes action to be taking place. I'd like to try to prevent that. And I'd like to also see the people in the neighborhood be able to use their yards again. That'd be really nice. And we did it with us in 2004, and the city went out there and they took a shovel and they dug a little, and they said it was fine. You know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that the land is level. There is no way that that is going to drain. The ditches are deep, they're not drenched deep enough. The swell or whatever they want to call it is very shallow. There's no way water's going to run there. It's simply just going to keep rising. So that whole thing needs to be redesigned. And I know they say that it was engineered to drain, but really, it doesn't take a rocket scientist, it's engineered to go down there and look at it. Can you can actually go the opposite direction that the city planned for it to go?
Someone else? Yes?
My name's Sean, I live on 577 South Sixth Street. I just built a swing set for my kids, and it took me all day. So I'm staying over there with my kids. And the day that it rained, I looked outside, and it was going down in the back of our yard. Sand was all the way down on the yard. All the mulch was just washed away. And my kid's toys were down, and his house, I had to go get them. And I remember walking through, and it was low and deep high, and I'm 6'1", so I just would like to see at least something, you know? I mean, we do pay property taxes, you know, so everybody else can play with that, you know? And I just would like to see something, if possible.
Any of you three have wet basements? It's the backyard, the water in the backyard. Okay, thank you. Yes?
Steve, who am I? Jim Brooks, 563 South Sixth. We've got a couple of sets of pictures here, two sets of identical. The first one is taking out my backyard, my lot, and where that bush is on the left. This looks at the old Abbey Retention Pond. The city did a lot of work on the Abbey Retention Pond on South Sixth Street, working that drainage ditch that goes off to the left at the front of this picture. Raised the berm on this retention pond 18 inches. You can see that berm right around the back of the water here. You can also see just about in the middle where the water's coming off Westfield Meadows' green space over the top of that berm, adding water to our, at the Abbey Retention Pond. As you go further west from where that water is, it's the Westfield Meadows Retention Ponds. They were both full, and the water was coming through. I think that's why a week ago Tuesday, our water went so high, because we were getting water coming back from the west that couldn't go anywhere. If you look at the second picture, the blue tab, that's the V plate north of Porter Road on the new regional retention pond. This was taken about 7:00 o'clock last Tuesday morning. The water's about a foot over the V plate. Down at the very bottom of that plate is a tile. It's my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, it's my opinion, if we recalibrate that V plate, move that notch up, there's a lot of room in that new retention pond to store water, let it come out slowly like it's supposed to be, not fill up the Westfield Meadows ponds as fast as they filled up last week, and hence not bring that water all back into Abbey Caw. If you look at the very right side, which is the east side of that plate, you can see at 7:00 o'clock last Tuesday morning, that plate had already started to fail. The water's coming around on the right side of it. 6:00 o'clock tonight, when I drove out there, the water's coming through underneath that plate and around both sides. We get another rain tonight, like we got last week, that plate will be out. Again, my opinion, if we get that plate anchored in there, recalibrate it like it's supposed to be, we can end part of these problems. I think it's important that we do that. We've had discussions here. A lot of you know this isn't my first time here talking about these water problems. The last time we were here talking about these water problems in Westfield Meadows, we were talking about the occupancy permits, how they wouldn't be granted until those problems were fixed. You can see by this plate, problem's not fixed. Third picture, purple tab, is what seems to be a new problem in the neighborhood. This is the backyard of 531 South Sixth.
Scrambled trees, isn't it?
That's us. Okay. I'll let them speak to how high the water was. I've not seen it this high in April this year or in 2004. I'm not sure why that water's backing up that way unless it's coming from, coming from the west and north, because nothing has changed. The east would have a drainage of their backyard. And the next picture, the pink tab, is looking south from my yard, back through all of these yards that have just spoken, back at the pond division of Sixth, which is the last picture. And the yellow tab, you can see how the pond division of Sixth has flooded back, over the back, what would that be, the northwest corner, and it's flooding into the Abbey Caw drainage, where it was never meant to be. That's what's changed. The city's done a lot of work in the Abbey Caw subdivision, and we're getting swamped from the south and from the north and west, and our backyards can't handle it. I mean, the city's done a lot of work, thank you. It's worked. Last Tuesday, my yard was dry by Wednesday morning. It's raining like it's supposed, but it can't handle the water off Westfield Meadows, so we said three years ago. Thank you for your time.
Yes?
March Snapper, 547 South Sixth Street. And I do have some pictures that kind of substantiate what Jim had said. These are from this morning about 7:30 a.m. If you look at the pictures one and four, they do show water that appears to be running down from Westfield Meadows into the Abbey Pond. And then, the same things he said about the V notch, that's picture number six. It's showing a fairly empty pond back there, so it's all coming down on us. And so, same thing today as it was Tuesday. And just to kind of cover what we have before, back in April, Mr. Sauer had tried to explain to us that groundwater and stormwater are two completely different things, but we've had the argument that we had two events pretty close together by Mr. Yatika. And I think that illustrates the point, that groundwater comes from stormwater, the two are interrelated. If you have too much stormwater, you get it in groundwater, you can't take anymore, and it causes problems. There is a correlation of that, if you haven't figured that out yet. I am curious, where, I saw nine inches in the Gazette from Mr. Yatika. I haven't seen that substantiated. I'd like to know what that source is. And we have had some people calling for an independent review from an outside firm. That's what I'd like to see. So far, we've had Fokken Van Dyke and Mr. Sauer look at all these plans, even though they've been outside engineers. But apparently, I would think he's signed up on all of this. And so, I said, "We'll get it right, we'll fix it." I'm tired of waiting to get it right. How long before my foundation takes damage? I don't want to wait that long. And I just can't understand what's happening. And the best-case scenario, it's incompetence. In the worst-case, it's corruption, something going on with the building, the builders, developers. And I can't think of any other explanation of why this keeps going on, why we can't get it right. As far as personally, I haven't had a wet basement, but I'm very concerned continual water is going to damage my foundation. And hopefully, this hasn't taken too much of your time, because there has been some talk about, and papers about having a class action lawsuit, and that'll be a lot more time-consuming and financially hurt the city. And I don't want to go down that road. I want to get it right and move on.
Yes?
John Jones at 531 South Sixth Street. I had over, about 75 feet of water.
To the retention pond will be water for seven days? Is that normal? Is there a building that does that? Obviously, there aren't any answers to any of those.
Well, we'll be trying to do a couple of things, Mark. I think the documentation of the rain events is something that we as a city have to do as part of our daily, the wastewater treatment plan. And that's, that's a gauge, that is a document that's verified by an operator, that he reports a lot of data. It is required every month to the DNR people. So it is valid data, and that's where we're getting our rainfall events, so it is accurate. And I think the biggest thing that you have to realize is that even, you know, the other night, I was driving from south of Tomlin, south of Evansville, coming back to Madison, and that was the, basically, the rain event that was occurring on, was last Monday, was sixth. That rain event was even more severe south of Evansville, but when I got to Evansville, it was less. By the time I got to Oregon, it started raining it off. The point is that even these rain events that we're taking all the data at the wastewater treatment plant, you know, you may be, you know, way on the west side or way on the east side, it is a volatile rain event. But it is accurate data. We're not making up this information, so I think we're going to put that to bed. You can question it all you want, but it is accurate data. How things are designed and how things are done at a public level for public projects is to protect people and protect people's assets and for the welfare of the people. And all of those things are based on statistics and probability. You know, if we have a 100-year event, that's what we design for. And do we design for a 200-year event? Do we build dams? Do we build bridges for those things? Well, in a way, we do, because we put, we say, well, we're going to design for a 100-year event, but we're going to put some safety factors on those, even those designs. Even when you design a bridge, and everybody's aware of the bridge, you have to, in the twin cities, you know, there's so many factors of safety that you, that you put into these things. And you, and you have to, you have to recognize that that is all at a cost, and the city has never taken any backseats with any cost, any of the designs that have come through here. We don't look at that as a criteria, if it has to be a 100-year event, and that's our standard, and that's what the state requires, and that's what any other engineering firm would require, that's what we design for. And I think there's a lot of other people around the country that are looking at weather patterns and saying, "Does this make sense?" Because it seems like we're getting these higher-intensity rain events. It's not just the vine, but it's the principal. And I hope that people realize, a six-inch rainfall, that's measured over a 24-hour timeframe. Well, you could have six inches of rain over a much less timeframe. That's a heck of a harder event to design for and take into account. That has not historically happened. Has it happened today? Yeah, it's happened today. Well, things are going to change, and things are going to have to be adjusted, but that's what we design for. That's what the standards are, and we've always complied with standards. I don't know, Mason, is there other? Couple other things? I know that, oh, there was one about the flow off of a field, under a field for Westfield Meadows, getting into, that's the first I'd heard of. And I'm glad that that was brought up tonight, because that's the information that's going to help us to solve that problem. That's a solvable problem, but I didn't know about that before tonight, and I'm glad that was brought up, because we can, I thought we got that fixed.
They got it fixed, I think.
And appreciate that. You know, that's the same thing that happens back in 2004, and we did raise that up. And if water is still coming off of that field, assuming what happened was an breach in the dike that we put on that pond, because I can't imagine if the water got over the top of the pond all through that area. But that can be fixed. I know that there was a, there's a problem with that control structure on the new pond that's north of Porter Road, and that can be fixed. We can take care of that. And that whole, that whole structure, that whole pond up there was our attempt to say, "All right, we don't have any development north of Porter Road, but we're going to put that pond in just as a safety factor, another safety factor to protect everything on the downstream end." Well, it's in, it's pretty new, it just got done last fall, and now we have, we have something we got to fix there, because it's not, it didn't control the water structurally a thing. That's, that's got to be fixed. So that's going to be the situation. How much? I don't know, but we'll look at the elevation of where that V notch was cut, and maybe, maybe that has to be, we haven't checked that, you know, as soon as we have not checked that. We will. We haven't closed that whole construction up yet, because it just got done. But those are the things that we can, we can make better, we can fix. Each one of these steps are going to take, you know, that's what we need to hear from. If there's, there's other things, you know, I try to write down instructive items as they're being brought up. The gentleman back here on the other side, on the east side of South Sixth, has still got some drainage runs. That's the first I've heard of. And I can deal with things when I hear them, but.
We were here in 2004. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we were here in 2004. We mentioned the same problems, and this is not just because of rain. This is also because of snow. And it looks like we have several new ponds in our backyard, every spring, every summer.
Well, we regraded that whole issue in.
Yeah, but did anybody come and inspect it?
No.
I mean, that's the question. I mean, when, when, where it's supposed to turn and go toward the hill, or be toward the opening, is higher than every, than the whole west of the area, how is the water supposed to get there?
And water can that go up?
That's fine. I'm glad you came here. I would like to know how many before.
I can't believe you didn't know this. We didn't have to tell you. Yeah, we have, several times. And I can't believe that the developer who did come out, who was quite well-known in the city, did not tell everybody about this.
Can I ask, as long as we're talking, because when that swell was put in, how wide was that supposed to be in these acres? Which, which one?
The one right behind the.
The one south side of the.
Yeah, behind your house.
The west side?
Mm-hmm.
I have the book, I think it's supposed to be...
It's between twenty retention ponds.
Twenty, twenty-five feet, something like that.
Did you know that was supposed to be twenty-five feet?
Really, you know, I don't, you know?
No.
I mean, it's never the...